Good evening, everyone. The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling. A warm welcome to you all to tonight's city council meeting. I respectfully ask our city clerk to please take the roll and to call the meeting to order.
Bow ring. Here. Bruno.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Hilberg. Kosarag.
Here.
Maladra. Marx.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Katchke.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
We begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite the, I'm not sure how to phrase this, the Wechter gang, maybe, to lead us in the pledge. We'll follow your lead, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a full agenda this evening. We're going to kick things off in a very celebratory way by introducing all of you to a good friend of the community's, Mr. Larry Wechter, who I believe has a few words to share with us regarding something pretty doggone cool. So, Mr. Wechter, the floor is yours. And then you just signal to me what you need me to do.
Like, jump up and sit down?
Yeah, something like that, that'd be good. Yeah.
You don't need that.
Yeah, exactly. I can't get up.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you very much for your time, thank you this evening for having us here. I haven't been a lawyer for a while, so I haven't spoken to a jury for quite some time. You'll forgive me for
Oh, quite all right.
tripping over my tongue. My name's Larry Wechter. My family has been living in Geneva for over 20 years now. We're here tonight with some friends and helpers. First to be mentioned is my wife Connie.
Hi Connie.
I should say, my wife of 40 years, five months, and 30 days.
Now I know you're an attorney.
Was an attorney.
Yeah, was an attorney.
And as you can see, I married her when she was nine years old.
You married up?
My older son Aaron is sitting back here. He's a graduate of NIU. He used to work at Johnson Controls on the east side
Oh, sure.
for several years. Now he's moved on to bigger and better things. So we're talking a little bit tonight about the Olympics, and he is the author of the correct terminology when it comes to the Olympics, because we were watching back in the 90s, when he was a kid and Matthew was a kid, and as he watched, he said, you know, this is the wrong name. This was, I don't know if this was in Salt Lake City or where this was, and I said, what do you mean? And he said, they need to call this the Not So Special Olympics. And that name has stuck since then. So he's our older son. My younger son is Matthew. Matthew, come on up here for a minute. How old are you now?
Thirty-four.
Matthew was born 34 years ago, 15 weeks premature, weighing less than two pounds. He spent the first four months of his life in the neonatal intensive care unit in Loyola, because at that time, Delnor, Central Dupage could not handle a situation like this. Then he came home and needed a lot of help, needed a lot of therapy. Every week, my wife would take him to therapy, five and sometimes six days a week, literally for years. And with a lot of help, and with a lot of other people supporting us, Matthew now has shoulders like this. So I just, I don't want to take up much of your time, I just wanted to
The floor is yours, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to mention a couple of people who have helped Matthew a lot. When Matthew was three years old, he started swimming. And special, special mention tonight goes to his two coaches, who coached him at Norris in St. Charles. Former, that's right, I corrected again. So, Sue and Hank Lang are here tonight. They coached Matthew
Welcome.
for over 20 years.
Wow.
And there was another young gentleman who was supposed to be here tonight but couldn't make it. He's picked up where they left off because they have retired now. We also have people from different walks of life who have helped Matthew. His social worker, Margie, from school. His very best friend in high school, who in the middle of COVID brought him our wonderful dog, so he could have a companion during that horrible time.
Wow.
Who else is here? Our neighbors, the McCurtins, who live behind us. I think you know them.
Yes, we've got a file on the McCurtins. Mostly Sean.
When I first moved in, I was looking out the rear window in Matthew's room, and I saw the top of this head that was pretty bald, and I thought to myself, I know that head. And sure enough, it was Paul, who had been a witness for me in a number of cases when I was a prosecutor on Third Street.
No kidding?
Yeah. So, it's a good thing you have a lot of hair still.
So how is witness location?
So, the main point I want to make is, Matthew has been persistent for many, many years, working very, very hard at different things, at different sports and so forth, but he really excels at swimming. And this past summer, how many times have you been at state championships for Special Olympics?
Lots of times.
Yeah, lots of times.
Lots of times.
Ran out of fingers and toes. And so he's done different sports. This past summer, we went downstate again for state championships. Matthew was seated in the fastest 25-meter backstroke, the sprint, and won convincingly. And that's why we're here tonight. So, I return the floor to you, sir.
That is perfect timing, because I'm going to recruit the assistance of my colleague, Mr. McCready. Matthew, if you don't object, we have a little something for you to recognize your excellence in everything you do, and we're delighted that you're with us tonight. So if you'll permit me, I'd like to show you something. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You've got it. And by the way, my daughter Emma says hello. Emma remembers you from high school, fondly remembers you from high school, so. Okay, you ready for this, big guy? Do you want to join me in helping out over here? Or do you want to stand here? Here, go.
It's okay, man, you can help.
Whatever you want to do.
I can try to help.
Okay, try to help. Follow me, man. We're going to move this over here behind your assistant. Okay, Matthew, check this out. Watch this. We're going to put this right in the middle here, and then I'm going to ask you to remove this whenever you're ready, okay? So you want to do a count of like 100? Count of three. Ready? Three, two, one, and remember that.
Oh.
Oh.
Matthew said, why is my image on here? Did we actually make rapturous speeches? Do I have a picture with your family here?
He's nervous.
Come on up, Aaron. Get out, you guy. It's like nobody likes you. Aaron, get over here for guys. Can you give us one more?
All right, we're good.
There.
There's a place called After School. They have two, boys, sitting, a kid.
You never come to a meeting and say, "Chickens."
And seven, like, Friday, so, what's the hour?
Oh, yes. It's sort of, it's like a race.
And they have nineteen, twenty-five.
I've just been told that Matthew's a Wheel of Fortune puzzle solver at Stewart, is that right?
I was, and I was just looking at it, looking at it.
And just out of curiosity, what is the Have a good night, Wechter Cheering Club.
Thank you.
And photographer, way to be subtle, nicely done.
I know, right?
Marissa, we're going to invite you to assist us with the next presentation. And our next presentation, ladies and gentlemen, is a good friend of ours here in Geneva. We have a presentation on the Illinois Firearms Secure Storage Survey. I'm just going to get the stage set for you, sir.
Hello.
Good evening.
Yep. All right, well, thank you for having me here tonight.
And Mr. Steve McHugh, of course.
Steve McHugh from Geneva, the Illinois State Chapter co-lead for Be Smart, which promotes secure storage of firearms. So I'm going to share the survey with you. We'll go over a couple of background charts, then the findings, and then some opportunities and some action steps that we can have, and of course, any questions. So why is this important? So we know that in households that lock up all of their firearms, we have a significantly lower risk of unintentional accidental injuries and suicides among children and teens with firearms. Seventy-eight percent of firearms used in school shootings by teens came from their parents' homes or homes of friends or relatives. And in the year 2020, 40,000 firearms were stolen from vehicles, usually right in front of the house or on the driveway, and it is the main source of stolen guns. So again, most of this is about safety, but you also look at it from another standpoint of the owner of the firearm. Doesn't want their gun stolen. The average price of a handgun is $650. So for those who might not be motivated by the safety aspect of it, you wouldn't want to have your gun stolen, for a number of reasons. So this survey was privately sourced. My background, I worked in market research for 42 years, so I designed the survey, programmed it, charted, and analyzed it. And the main reason for doing this is that none of the data that you're going to see here exists anywhere. So the goal for Illinois Be Smart is to increase awareness and actual practice of secure storage of firearms year after year. So we need to know where we're starting from, which is why we did the survey. So this represents a benchmark wave. Just the specs of the survey is that this is a state of Illinois sample of English-speaking respondents aged 21 and older, because that is the legal ownership of firearm age within Illinois. Total sample size was 300. We would have liked to have done more, because we, when we get into some subsets, like gun ownership within the southern area of Illinois, we get into some smaller base sizes, but we'll point that out. The average interview length was about one minute. We like to keep the survey short. Longer surveys, people rush through those, and the data gets less reliable. The data was collected October 10th through 11th. So getting into the data, this is claimed firearm ownership. We didn't come right out and ask, do you own a gun? The question is, if there are any firearms in your household or in any of your household's vehicles, are they all locked up, non-locked, or some of both? And there is an option to say, there are no firearms in our household or in any of the vehicles. So 42% of households in Illinois claim to own a fire, at least one firearm. That is highest in central and southern Illinois, almost double that of northern Illinois. So this AB signifies statistical significance, and that's all the stats we're going to talk about today. So it's about twice as high, ownership is about twice, twice as high in southern and central Illinois as it is in northern, and higher in the rural areas. So because the northeast is the bulk of the households in Illinois, we broke that out by urban, suburban, and rural also, and we see that urban and suburban is about equal, at about 35%. Rural is a lot higher, but it's a very small portion of northeastern Illinois. And this is Chicago and the suburbs of Chicago. So how do they store those guns? 60% say they lock all of them up. 18% say they lock up some, 22% say they lock up none. Locking all of them up is lowest in central and southern Illinois, where the most amount of guns are, and in the rural areas. You would think that households that have children present within them would be the ones locking up the guns the most. That is not the case. 63% in households with children versus 58% without. Same with those aware of the secure storage message, not a significant difference. Where there is a big difference is in locking up some of the guns, statistically significant difference, locking up some of them. And this is what we hear, we go to gun shows, we do tabling events there, that, hey, I have kids in the house, I'm not dumb, I lock up all my guns, except for the one I need to get to quickly. That's what we hear most, most often of why people don't lock up all of their guns. You know, if you have it for personal protection, I need to get to my gun quickly. Okay? We were at a tabling event, giving out these free cable locks at Chapel Street Church for a safety fair about a year ago. There was a young woman with four young children who came up and said, hey, can I get one of those locks? My husband has 20 guns scattered around the house, all loaded, none of them locked. Can I get one of those? Like, no ma'am, you can take at least 20 of those, please. So this is an opportunity, that it's, you know, it only takes one gun to have a tragedy in the house. Okay? So specifically within the home, how are they stored? So we've got 42% of the guns, or households owning a gun, within the home. So 90, you know, pretty much 99% of all gun owners have one in their home. And how are they stored? 26% keep them unlocked within the house. This adds up to more than 100%, because you can have more than one gun and store them in different ways. Okay? So cable locks, what I just showed you, is the least desired way. These are what I just said, we hand them out. The health department hands these out, police department hands them out for free. If you have to buy it, it costs maybe $5. They're not the most secure things in the world. It's a very simple key. A teenager can probably pick this lock with a toothpick or a paperclip or something like that. And it's not really easy for the user to use either. If you have an intruder coming in, you got to find the key, and then you got to keep your gun unloaded to be able to use this. So there are other options, to the point of, I need to get into, to my gun very quickly, something like this biometric safe. So, with the fingerprint, oh, of course, it's not going to work for me now. But just very quickly, this can secure down, tie down, but get into that very quickly. But you see on here, the biometric safe isn't used a whole lot more than the cable locks, and why could that be? Well, the perception is that maybe this safe is a little bit more expensive, right? A lot of people think that this costs maybe, you know, starts at 200 bucks or something like that. This costs $54. So it's a lot less expensive than most people think. When we first presented this a couple of weeks ago, somebody said, hey, can we look at this by income levels? Maybe upper income is more likely to own a gun, because they are expensive. It's not. Lower income is 43% gun ownership, 41% among middle income, 46% among higher income. And when we look at cable locks specifically by income, again, you would think because they're less expensive, it'd be the lower income that are using them the most. That's not the case. It's not a significant difference, but upper income is just as likely to use cable locks as lower income. Biometric safes, you would think that upper income would be more likely to use those if they're more expensive. They're not, no more likely to use them than lower income. What is significant is, upper income is the least likely to lock up all of their guns. Within vehicles, 22% of all households in Illinois keep a gun in at least one of their vehicles. And just a couple of slides ago, I showed that the rural areas are more like, most likely to have a gun within the home. That's not the case within, within vehicles. It's 24% among urban, 21% among suburban, 25% rural. So just as likely to be in suburban areas as rural areas keeping a gun in your, your home, or, I'm sorry, in your vehicle. And the most common way of storing a gun in your vehicle is in the trunk, glove box, or under the seat, or some other unsecured type of place, which is why we're getting so many stolen from vehicles. Okay? This is a very simple safe. Costs $22, or, sorry, $19. Opens very simple, combination, and again, it has a cable here that you can secure to the bottom of the seat. $19 for that, to keep your gun from being stolen from the car. And we get into smaller sample sizes here, because only 22% have a gun in the car. It's not only, but it gets to smaller sample sizes. So when we break those out by income groups, we get into small sample sizes, but again, the upper income is the least likely to secure their guns within their cars. And lastly, we'd like to encourage parents to ask about the presence of firearms and how they're stored in other homes when they go there. In the same way, normalize the conversation, in the same way you would say, hey, my child has a peanut allergy, can we make sure that there's no peanut butter or anything in the home? Or your teen going to another home for a party, you know, is there going to be alcohol there? Because if there is, you know, my kid might be kicked off the football team, or something like that. So 37% say that they do ask about firearms in other homes, and that is higher among those who have heard of the secure storage message, at 42%, which is a good sign, but we would like to increase that over time. So with that data, some specific actions that we think that different folks could take, is to post information and videos on your websites and other communications encouraging secure storage of all guns in home and especially within vehicles. Communicate both the cost and hassle prevention and safety benefits, both, because not everybody is motivated by just the safety benefit message. Biometric and other safes and cases, raffles, and giveaway events. We had a volunteer in Bloomington, Illinois, who partnered with the Bloomington Police Department to give away, they got a grant and gave away 312 safes. It was first come, first served. You just needed a valid FOID card to be able to get a safe. It was at a farmer's market, 7:00 in the morning. By 6:00 in the morning, there was a line a quarter of a mile long for 312 free safes. Clarify the safe and case prices. It's just a fraction of the cost of a firearm. So again, that biometric safe that I showed at $55 is less than a tenth of the cost of a handgun. And spread the word. Secure additional actionable audiences. I'll come back to this slide in just a minute, but these are some of the audiences that we have secured so far. So mostly Kane County, Dupage, and DeKalb County, and then we'll be going to central and southern counties further into next year as well. So again, if you know of any other audiences that could benefit from this, please let us know. And then just some conversations that we had as we were presenting this, some other ideas that may be longer term, is the auto industry. Why not offer optional secured gun safes within vehicles? It's a win-win for everybody. The insurance industry, offer annual discounts and penalties for safe storage. So we all pay less for So we all pay less for life and health insurance. If we're a non-smoker, we pay more for home insurance if we have a trampoline in our backyard. So, you know, that was an idea that was discussed quite a bit at our, at our first meeting. So all of those ideas and any others that you may have. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. McHugh from the dais? Alderperson Bruno, Alderperson Ruby?
Thank you. Is there, I have seen occasionally where a gun taken from a parent's household, that parent does face penalties for not, for basically providing that gun, whether intentionally or not. Do you know if there's much in the way of legislation that would codify broadly that if your gun is used in some type of act of suicide or crime, that you bear significant responsibility by simply having your name on the, on the owner's ID?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that question. I'm not sure specifically about suicide. I know there are laws about like if it's used in a crime within Illinois. I believe the legislation is for a child age fourteen or younger. I believe that is being worked on to make it eighteen or younger because, for example, most school shootings are done by teens between the ages of fourteen and eighteen. So I know there was, I believe it was in Michigan that there was a case of that, that the parent was liable for the, his son in the shooting. Yes.
Well, it seems a uniquely American problem and I'm, this seems nibbling around the edges, but thank you.
Alderperson Ruby?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for being here and sharing this important message with the community. Just a quick question. You mentioned people would, at the farmer's market giveaway. So I'm really perplexed. Somebody will stand in line for an hour to get a free safe and they have the financial means to own firearms, but they won't buy a safe. Do you have any insight on what's happening there?
Yeah, but well, people will take anything for free, number one. But also I think some of that comes down to the perception of how much these safes cost.
I've wondered about that.
It has to be. I mean, I just asked the other day, I brought this, I said, how much do you think this costs? And the person said four hundred dollars. It's fifty-four dollars.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. I guess I'd like to add too, just as, as an aside, my son is currently in Costa Rica doing community service type work. He's with about seventy kids from around the entire country. Only one other child from the United States is there. And when he first met everybody, he said every single person asked him either how many guns he owned, when they found out he was from the U.S., or if he owned a gun. Those were the two questions that all the nineteen-year-olds were asking my son. And I just, that was really telling.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we all have opinions on, on the whole gun subject. You know, I'm here, you know, just saying that if you own a gun, please keep it secured and safe.
Thank you. It's a great message.
Anyone else? Alderperson Pachke.
I just want to echo the gratitude for the presentation and for all the work that went into the survey. I think it's important to reflect on the data, even though it may be discouraging at times. I think it's important to continue this conversation and to keep it top of mind that while we may disagree on some of the issues around this, I think we can all agree on safety as a priority for everyone. So thank you for the presentation and for everything you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. McHugh, it's always a pleasure to see you.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What are your plans for us tonight? Anything fun?
I don't know. Where are we going?
Not with me, man. Join the Vectors, they're out having a party, I think.
Yeah, I'll join them. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, folks, and I think it's important, Mr. McHugh made this presentation almost a month ago, is that right, at the library?
That's correct.
And it was, it was obviously well received. And he had promised at that time to hone the presentation in such a way to deliver to any and all audiences. So I was grateful when Steve said, of course, I'll be happy to come to the meeting on the twentieth. So we hope that you'll receive abundance of invitations to join our friends throughout Kane County and elsewhere, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Just about removing? That would be under item five.
Gotcha.
Coming up, any, any changes to the agenda, amendments? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be enacted through one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the omnibus agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Alderperson Bowring.
I would like to request that items nine B and nine C be removed from the consent
Second, seconded by Alderperson Bruno. A voice vote sufficient, all in favor of removing items nine B, nine C, as requested by and seconded by Bowring and Bruno respectfully, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those items have been removed, will be considered in their normal sequence of events.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the omnibus agenda as amended. Is there such a motion? Motion by Mayor, seconded by Pachke. Clerk, Clerk Fernari, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative and two absent, the omnibus agenda as amended has been approved by this council. We will now jump to those items that were removed by Alderperson Bowring and seconded by Alderperson.
We have seven.
Oh, forgive me, did I miss those? Sorry about that, seven. Excuse me. Reports recommend acceptance of the strategic plan workshop report and priorities for fiscal year 2025. Motion by Alderperson Mayor, seconded by Alderperson Pachke. Any questions or comments for Mr. McCready? Any introductions, Mr. McCready?
No, I just note that City Council Senior Management Team and SPAC met, SPAC Chair met on Friday, November third for our annual strategic planning workshop. The workshop included presentations and discussions regarding various outstanding policy topics that, that afternoon. And lastly, as always, we've participated in our strategic planning exercise outlining strategic plan priorities for the year ahead, of which are detailed in the report before you this evening. So again, looking forward to another year of implementing our strategic plan.
A motion by Mayor, a second by Pachke. All in favor of accepting the strategic plan workshop report and priorities for fiscal year 2025, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative and two absent, item seven A has been accepted by this council. Number eight municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
The Geneva expenditures for today's date approval, total three million, thirty-eight, I'm sorry, three million, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and seventeen cents.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
The motion by Alderperson Bruno is to approve the bills as presented, which are available on the city's website and in each council member's packet. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Kosarog. Clerk Fernari, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative and two absent, the bills have been approved for payment. Item nine, Committee of the Whole Items of Business. Item nine A is to consider resolution number 2023-117, authorizing the execution of a development economic incentive agreement between the City of Geneva and Woodmont Tapville Geneva LLC for 101-105 West State Street, Geneva, Illinois. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Bowring makes the motion, seconded by Pachke. Mr. McCready, is there anything else that we need to add to this other than what was discussed in the last meeting?
No, I just note that we do have Director Timoshenko with us here in the audience this evening if there are any questions.
Any questions for the director from the dais? Alderperson Swanson?
I just wanted to make a statement, and that was, I oppose this. I last at the Committee of the Whole, I'm super excited for the project. I think it's fantastic that we're taking correcting deferred maintenance on a historic structure, a high-profile structure. I think it's wonderful that we're getting a business to go into a boarded up building that's been boarded up for several years. The problem that I had with the agreement is that it lacked a clawback provision. And by that I mean, we're, we're offering a grant of a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars with basically no, no strings attached. And if the business were to close a week after they open, they pocket that money, we're adding to the value of the building, and, and I would prefer to see a clawback clause provided for. So I would ask for that in any economic incentive agreement. So that's why I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Item nine A? If not, Deputy Clerk Fernari, please take the roll. Simple majority is what's needed to pass this item.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
And Mayor Burns?
The motion passes with eight affirmative votes, two nay votes, and two absent. It has been approved. Nine A has been approved. Thank you both for your patience. Thank you, Director Timoshenko. Onto nine B, which was removed from the consent agenda, is to approve resolution number 2023-118, authorizing the purchase of Exxon body worn cameras, vehicle cameras, and supporting software at a cost not to exceed four hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents over a five-year term utilizing the SourceWell contract. Is there a motion to put this matter on the floor? Motion by Alderperson Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. The matter's on the floor. Mr. McCready, is there anything you want to add to this prior to discussion?
I would just note that the following item concerns the purchase of law enforcement body worn cameras necessary for compliance with the Illinois Safety Act. The city's current budget includes funds for the purchase of cameras, and we do have Deputy Chief Dean and Chief Passarelli here in the audience with us this evening should there be any questions.
This matter, oops, this matter's on the floor for discussion. Does anybody from the dais wish to speak first? Alderperson Bowring? Bruno?
So I requested that this be removed from the consent agenda because I had a constituent reach out to me to raise some questions about it. I noticed that this constituent is here tonight, and I hope they might be willing to speak with us a bit. I'd like to note that Brian Nord is an internationally recognized professional expert on, well, not specifically on body worn cameras, but on AI, which is an intersecting technology. And I found many of his points to be quite compelling. Wanted to ask Brian, would you rather that I speak for a few minutes or would you like to say anything?
A quick question, just procedural, you cannot open the floor to anyone to speak?
Can I ask you to open the floor?
If you're finished with your comments and.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and.
Okay, great.
So I will go ahead and finish what I was going to say. So I think everyone in City Council received a letter from Mr. Nord today. My perspective is that this is a concrete opportunity to apply our values to a real diversity, equity and inclusion issue. We just had a task force present a sort of their report. This is technology that will be in our community for years, and I think that we need to be thoughtful about it, not rushed. I understand there is a state mandate. I'm not opposing eventually complying that with, with that mandate, but I want to make sure that when we do so, we're doing so in a way that is thoughtful and make sure that we are taking into account the role that AI can potentially play in this technology and how we see that fitting in with our community. I strongly feel that the time to think about an issue like this, like that intersects with DEI is now, not later, not when we see problems. I think at that point, it becomes much more intractable. I would propose that we delay the purchase until after we have a policy discussion where we come up with guidelines for how this technology will be used by police and public works. Sorry, mixing up my, my agenda items. How this, how this will be used by police, what potential there is for the software that comes as part of this equipment to incorporate AI and how, the extent to which the City Council, the city is able to regulate that. I would ask for some information from the chief and the deputy chief about, sorry, I hope I got your titles correct, about the timeline for this. So I know that we are required to be in compliance by 2025. Is there time pressure on this particular, executing this particular contract at this time? And if so, what is that? And yeah, so that, that's what I have to say for now. Would you like to respond to that now or? Thank you. I guess I will keep the floor for now.
Good evening. As far as the timeline for implementation, we have to be online with those cameras per the state mandate by January of 2025. That's for any agency that has a community population of 50,000 people or less. The challenge is with, or with this order now, we're in a two to six month implementation range or delivery range. And the state mandates, again, that we're online with these cameras by January of 2025. So if that purchase time gets pushed back, I'm sure there'll be an increase in cost to the contract, along with running a risk of coming up to that deadline when all these other agencies start trying to get their cameras as well.
Okay, so if there were to be a policy discussion about the extent to which AI is going to be involved in the use of these cameras or the analysis of the data coming from these cameras, do you feel that that would push us past the realm at which we could, you know, comply with the state statute? It sounds like there's room there, although I, I hear that you have some concerns about cost driving it. Is there a time period after which this contract is not viable for us?
Deputy Chief Dean could speak a little more to the contract. I think we're kind of up against a deadline as far as the pricing that was offered to us, that was proposed to the City Council currently, that if we don't move forward with that, I'm sure there will be an increase in that cost.
What's the time, sorry, what's the time cutoff for that?
Well, to give you a little bit of a background in reference of timing, initial conversations with Exxon really started about this time last year. So we went through a trial period with the, the current AB3s that are in the proposal and then working through all of the contract because obviously there's a lot of that legal language in there. The attorney Radovich assisted with and went over it with at length. We had negotiations with the Exxon contracts team and their attorneys to make sure it worked for, for both entities. So really, if you're thinking about in terms of, of timing, we're already a year into this current contract or this contract proposal. If we were to delay it, or if this had gone through as planned, we were looking at an invoice date of December fifteenth of this year. If we push back that, virtually the past year is going to have to probably be reworked again in terms of what other contract language is in there. And as the chief noted, those are 2023 numbers that are in there for both the AB3s and the Fleet III. So those are, we're going to see a likely a significant increase in costs as well. So to push it, just thinking about the work that has been done at this point to get us to the. So to push it, just thinking about the work that has been done at this point to get us to the point that we're at now, I can't say whether or not we would, we would be, our backs would be against the wall for that 2025 date. However, we would, the whole point in this was to try to get this instituted and in-play with our officers so they were comfortable long before we had to by statute.
Sure, I understand that. So again, my concern is that I think a policy discussion, I think the most logical time for a policy discussion about issues like this is before we make a purchase. I think there's potentially some latitude to have a policy discussion before they're put into use, and it sounds like there is some, like, if the invoice was December of this year, when is it delivered? Are they delivered?
The AB3s, the body cams, the potential to get delivered by mid-January of this year. It's the squad car cameras that the chief noted is a two-to-six time. But that's delivery, so by the time we actually get it implemented, go through the policy, some training for the officers and the staff at the police department, I mean, probably looking at maybe a March date of full implementation if we're, you know, falling behind a little bit. Obviously, we'd like to get that through a little faster to put them in use if we have the hardware. But that's probably what we would be looking at in terms of timing.
Another question. Am I right to think that you're not in a good position tonight probably to answer detailed questions about the extent to which Axon's onboard software or whatever all we're getting with it involves the use of AI?
Yeah, I think we...
Facial recognition? You are able?
Yeah, we can answer some questions, sure.
Okay. So, okay, so can you tell me about that? What, like, what is, what is it using AI for and in what ways?
Really, in the package that we're getting, AI is specific to the redaction software. So that's the only portion. They did, they do offer a package with transcription where the system will auto-transcribe what is being said between the officer and whomever they're having in contact with. We are not getting that as part of our service.
Okay.
So it's really just meant for the redaction purposes. So it will recognize faces, it'll recognize license plates, it'll recognize the inside of our squad cars. So if the computers are up and it's showing law enforcement-related material that we don't want to have broadcast out, in terms of it's a video that's requested for a FOIA or part of a larger case or something like that, we can redact those. So that it would, it would virtually see those things, it would help the end user. So it wouldn't just do it, it would be one of our officers or one of our city staff that would review the data, use the redaction software tool inside the software to be able to recognize those faces. Because it may recognize a face, but it may be blurring out an officer's face. Well, that's not something that we need redacted. So there would be the human element that would then take that blurred face off of the video and turn that blur off, so to speak. But if it was somebody that was unrelated to the case, that happened to be, you know, a passerby in the video, that doesn't have any reason to be in the video if we needed to release it, then it would, it would see that image. The officer would, or whomever was running the software would see that and say, okay, this is something that does need to be redacted, and then keep that redaction in there. So that's, that's really about the only point in the package that we're proposing that has any sort of AI tool in it.
Okay.
And with that, oh, I'm sorry, it does not identify that person. You know, there is no facial recognition software in there that tells us who that person is, that it's identifying as a human face or a license plate or the computer in the car. It's just simply, here's the face.
And any additional features? Like, how would it work if Axon rolled out new features down the line? Would they would have to be agreed to through a separate contract, or is it possible they could make changes to this that would impact, you know, the package that we did have?
I don't see us changing the package that, again, we're in that five-year contractual window with them, and I don't see, I mean, obviously, they make additions and there's different things they do, but I wouldn't see changing to something different than what we've already asked for.
Okay.
And it would have to be in the contract that was reviewed by Attorney Radovich as well. So if you remember, the question's about my 90. Now, that's not something that we're implementing right now, but it's built into the contract. So in the event that we would like to do so in the future, it's, the language is already there and agreed to. So there's nothing, if they come out with a new technology after we sign the contract to sign, then it wouldn't be part of something that's been reviewed, and we wouldn't be able to take part in it, even if we wanted to.
Okay. Are you aware of whether there's any state or federal regulation that impacts the use of AI in these situations?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I think that takes care of my questions from this point. Again, I would like to reiterate, my concern is that I think that, so I'm not an expert in this area, right? This is why someone had to bring it to my attention for me to start to delve into it a bit. But I do, I do think it's something that should be taken seriously. I know that I spoke with Assistant Administrator McCready today, and he mentioned that there had been at some point an item in one of our strategic plans to come up with a comprehensive plan about technology implementation, and that seems to have maybe never been developed. But so I think that there is a need for that type of discussion at the, at the city level and as it relates to particular technologies like this. I'd like to request that once anyone else on the dais has had a chance to speak, that we ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to say anything or ask any questions. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderperson Bowering said most of what I wanted. I feel remiss in, this had come to my attention some years ago, probably not when AI was quite on the, had visibility that it does now. I am very sympathetic to the, to the timing of this contract and the implementation and being ready. So I, I probably wouldn't delay it, but I, if, if staff is looking for consensus, I think it would be important that at our earliest convenience, we have a policy discussion on umbrella technology issues that might be reflected in future contracts for, for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Patchkey?
I also was vaguely aware of concerns about the use of AI, especially with facial recognition things. I'm glad to hear that that's not a part of the package that we're going to be using. I know that it is a serious equity issue, and I think there's, you know, that's been widely known in the news, and it's been covered pretty well, that everybody should be somewhat aware of the issues around this. So I would agree that we need to have a solid policy discussion on this before, preferably before it gets away from us at our earliest convenience. I would also agree that with the timeline being what it is, I don't see a reason to hold up the purchase at this point. But if we can have agreement, that a policy discussion is definitely needed in the very near future, I could be comfortable with this.
Alderperson Mayor?
I also think that we should keep the purchase moving forward, knowing how electronics supply chain is pretty messed up right now. I'd rather not delay, but I agree that a policy discussion would be helpful. I'm more interested in the drone discussion, which is next, that policy, what the limits are on our authority to use drones and use these body-worn cameras. So I suspect that there's a lot more that we don't know that's already out there that we could, you know, learn about and become less concerned with what you guys are buying. I'm very pleased that you had good answers already on the AI, so that's, it's good. But yes, policy discussion sounds like a great idea.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderperson Kocarog?
I also don't want to delay the purchase, I'll tell you that much. Are there, is, I assume there's case law, probably developing more than well-established. Are there circumstances to which, I guess we stay on topic with the agenda item, but can somebody make a FOIA and just view any police surveillance camera anytime they want?
No, they cannot. I mean, there's state statute, and it's, I know it'll be to the next item on the agenda too, but for this, there's state statute that dictates how these cameras are to be utilized, how long data is retained, how you receive the videos, the FOIA information. And the people who can get the FOIA information are those who are party to that video. Most videos fall off within 90 days and they're gone unless there's an arrest or some sort of criminal activity. You know, the legislation was crafted to assist us in equity, to assure that police work was transparent, that those in our community knew what we were going through and what our interactions with our community looked like on a daily basis. And that was an important part of why this legislation was created and why the mandates were attached to the Safety Act. And I support that. I'm going to be a little biased about what our department is, but I think we have a phenomenal police department. And there's not a single officer who has a concern about wearing a body camera to show the work that they do each and every day, and they do treat people really, really well. And I think it's a great tool to assure that accountability, that if we needed to go back and look, we can see how they're treating our community. So I think it's important. But yeah, there's, you know, by FOIA is how you can get it, but you do have to be party to that video.
There's rules and regulations on all this stuff, maybe just including, if I could just jump ahead and maybe save the time, including on the drones?
Correct. That is, there's limitation...
I mean, you can't just turn it on and go in somebody's backyard.
Let's limit that discussion until we get to the drone issue, so.
All right.
Just got to report that, based on the drone above you, Brad, you were violation of that discussion, so.
All right. Well, I'll save that question for them, but I think we know the answer.
Anyone else on the dais? If not, I believe we do have a guest. Invite that guest if he or she wishes to speak. Dr. Nord, if you'd see.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for reading or receiving the document I sent this afternoon. So I'm, I'm not afraid of robot overlords, okay? So this is called artificial generalized intelligence. This is like, if you create a huge thing that will run the world, that's not going to happen anytime soon. What I'm worried about is the daily misuse and abuse of the algorithms that we have because it's so easy to write them and deploy them and get a really bad answer, and we don't know how these algorithms work. I've been studying these for almost 10 years in detail, developing them myself, and we, they are biased. You don't get a confidence measurement out of how good the thing is that you're classifying, such as a face. Federal studies have shown that they are biased against people of color. And so actually, the discussion on the, the Axon software was slightly incomplete, just for the context of what the technology does. So even if you are doing facial recognition, if there is a white person or a brown person in the video that is being redacted, it is probably going to misclassify the brown person. And there are really good studies that show why that happens. It's because these algorithms are trained on data that they see, and they're not always trained on all the data that involves all the people that it might be deployed on. So there's a whole bunch of shenanigans going on with AI right now. There's a lot of hype out in the world. People just use it for everything. They don't check it, and it's really poorly benchmarked and tested. And it's not open source. And so somebody goes to you and says, hey, I'm going to sell you this really great algorithm. Don't worry, it's got really high percentage. Or they won't even say that. People have been deploying 70% facial recognition success algorithms out there. I don't know about you, but that doesn't really work for me when it comes to classifying people's faces and finding out who they are, or even just knowing whether they're the right person in a video to redact. So I, you know, these are, these algorithms are often called black box algorithms because we don't know how they work on the inside. You can't get in and understand why it's doing what it's doing. And similarly, this entire field of AI, part of the problem is that things are moving so fast, and there's so little oversight. There's no regulation. So what's happened in a few municipalities over the last five years, 13-ish, is that they have banned the use of facial recognition software by the government, by policing agencies because we know it doesn't work well. There are multiple contexts in which it can be used. I don't know if those were body cam redaction contexts, but generally facial recognition doesn't work well. So I mean, because things are moving so fast, there's so little oversight, I think that it's a really low bar to start to establish a ladder of oversight and bring some sunlight to the issue. So like, I would love to see the actual software agreement that the police are getting because there are, the devils are in the details about how things can be updated. There are, there are ways that things could be, say, used on a test case basis, and does that have to be approved by city council or something? Part of the way that Axon got into the market was that they gave police departments free cameras and free software. Do we know that, can the police test free stuff? And in what, in what way can they deploy it? And how does the public know when that's happening? So I think the answer here is sort of a graded or some kind of ladder of putting sunshine on everything that's going on and not letting the little details hide so that everybody knows how things are going to be used. Yeah. Okay. Cool.
Thank you, Dr. Nord. Is there anyone else in the audience who wish to address this matter or share some comments regarding it? Back to the dais. We've had some good discussion. Anyone else wish to speak for a second time, or those who have not yet spoken wish to speak for a first time? Alderperson Bowering, you look like you're getting ready to flip that baby on.
Thank you. I, it seems fairly clear that the consensus is to go forward with this purchase agreement. I would, I guess I'd like to request some guidance either from the chair or from the attorney about, is there a way to establish as part of that or corollary to it that we will engage in a policy discussion about how these surveillance technologies will be used in our town and, and the broader issue of AI? And I know it overlaps, so I'm going to be going through some of this again in a minute. Is there a way to, I guess it does not seem prudent at this point to stand in the way of this purchase agreement. But I, I would like to say I think the right time to have this kind of conversation is before the fact. So next time we're starting, I wasn't on the council a year ago, next time we're starting a process like this for new technology, I think the right time to start that policy discussion is at the beginning of that time. And I know this gets into that gray area of, we're supposed to be, you know, up here and staff is, you know, on the ground level doing the nitty-gritty work, and I recognize that and respect it. But again, I think that, that there are times when we need these policy discussions. So it's a very belabored way of getting to what procedurally is appropriate, if anything, in terms of moving forward with the vote on this item, but then requesting a policy discussion on the broader issues.
That's, that's more than appropriate. I do want to make one statement. Dr. Nord referenced the copy of the contract. That contract is available on the website.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet as well. Since last week. Number two, I want to ask the chief and deputy chief a question regarding our neighbors to the north and south. Our neighbors to the south, the beautiful bucolic city of Batavia, has had cameras now for some time, video cameras, body cameras.
Correct. Yes.
Are you aware of discussion prior to the use of those cameras, similar to what perhaps Alderperson Bowering or anyone else is suggesting, a comprehensive and global discussion regarding this technology, AI in particular?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No.
And I can certainly ask Jeff this as well. Has there been any discussion regarding, an after-the-fact discussion regarding?
No.
I'm not aware of it.
No.
Got it. But that said, I'm more than happy to engage in such a discussion. Absolutely.
Great.
I think everyone at the council probably would.
Yeah.
If nothing else, we can learn a heck of a lot, more than we think we know right now. And I want to echo what the chief said, too. I have yet to meet an officer in any community who has not said, I want to wear these damn things because I want, A, my integrity to be beyond reproach, and if I'm failing in my administration of the old... And if I'm failing in my administration of the oath of office, I want to be corrected and/or disciplined accordingly based on the evidence, not based on hearsay. So I think that's a wise move. Are you comfortable with that direction? I will work with Stephanie and Mr. Sandek and others, the chiefs, and we'll get something on the calendar right away.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anything else? Anyone else on this matter? We're on item 9B. We have a motion. We have a second. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Ruby?
Hi.
Kocarog?
Hi.
Marx?
Hi.
Mayor?
Hi.
Tatchkee?
Hi.
Swanson?
Hi.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item 9B has been approved by this council. 9C, which was also removed, the consent agenda, is to approve resolution number 2023-119, authorizing the purchase of two X-10 unmanned aerial systems at a cost not to exceed $58,654.12 from Skydio Incorporated through a GSA contract. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Alder Person Marx makes that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Bruno. Alder Person Bowring, since you asked this to be removed, I'll be happy to turn the floor over to you.
Yes, so I won't go through all of my sort of general questions or general points again. But again, I think that this falls into that same area. Looking into this, I understand that there was legislation that was passed this year by the state expanding police use of drones. There are restrictions, not allowed to be used to infringe on First Amendment rights. There's, you know, some caveats to that. And again, without trying to cast dispersions on our particular police force, I think it warrants a discussion about what we as the City Council of Geneva feels appropriate use of this type of surveillance in Geneva. And I would note also, you know, as with Axon, and definitely cribbing from Dr. Nord's letter to us, you know, this company also is very interested in implementing and incorporating AI. And I want to make sure that we are being conscientious in how we approach that. So I guess I do have a couple of specific questions. So I believe last time, and I don't know if this is going to be for you guys or for our Director of Public Works. Last time, I believe our GIS coordinator, Mike, I forget his last name.
Bledsoe, yes.
Thank you, Bledsoe, was noting that there is, I forgot, is he who said this? Or a deputy chief are planning to request exemption from the line of sight requirements. I understand some of the reasoning for that. I was curious. I'm sorry, I did not have time to go back and review the video. So that applies, I believe, also to the police use of any drones that the city owns because it's an exemption for the city.
Correct.
So I guess I'd like you to take us through, if you don't mind, and I apologize if it's repetitive, sort of how all the police envisioned using this drone. Yeah, we'll start there.
You first?
Yeah.
I think how we envision it is limited circumstances where we have special events, missing persons, things of that nature. Water rescues in the river, if we get a report of somebody in the boil or something to that effect that we can help with the fire department. That's where we really envision it. The statute does limit police use. So if we were to, let's say, you know, have a major traffic crash, that is another reason that we could use it. However, we typically will utilize our partners with the King County Accident Reconstruction Team to do that, to drone that, to get the aerial footage and have the 3D software that was going to be included in the Public Works drone. So that was not included into ours. But that would be a use that we could use it, but we probably wouldn't. So it would be mostly the special events. Kind of going through some reading, I think what the legislature, when they changed the statute to allow the special events, their use during special events, they wanted to kind of come up with a definition of what the special event was. So they utilized what FEMA used for a special event. And it follows what we typically see here, where there's a special event application. It goes through the city staff. Everyone takes a chance to review it. And then it gets approved by the city administrator and the council. So that's where we really envision the use of the drone. The statute also clearly says that the drones cannot be weaponized. There's a complete section in there that they cannot be used. Any sort of facial recognition software can be attached to that, to the drone.
Okay.
And we, you know, we brought it up at the last meeting. Over the last month, we've had two instances where we had missing juveniles in town. And we use drones from a neighboring jurisdiction who are able to come in and help us. It's a force multiplier, you know? And when you're looking for a juvenile and it's cold outside and they're in a wooded area somewhere in town, it's an amazing tool to assist us in finding that. Now, had that drone not been available in that neighboring jurisdiction, we're having to put officers and firefighters on foot in the woods in an attempt to do that. So it is a great tool. And the statute is very restrictive, as I think it should be, and calls out those things that we can use it for as far as facial recognition goes. If you're going to use it for any sort of criminal investigation, you need a search warrant. So we'd have to go through the state's attorney's office and a judge would have to sign off on it. And ultimately, the accountability is, we have to do a report annually that is sent into the state that can be publicly viewed. We have to have our drone policy on the city website so that everyone can see what is involved in that. And ultimately, if we violate it, the Attorney General can come after me. You know, I'm responsible for the safe and effective, and I don't want that. So I would try and avoid that. So the statute really sets that up well to make sure that we're following all the rules and don't have a way to violate that, and we wouldn't want to, so.
Okay. Well, again, I would like to understand if there's time pressure on this purchase also. And I, again, would invite Rich Babica up here if you'd like to comment because I know that this is two drones, one for each department. Is it possible to delay this purchase until we have such a policy discussion? Or what is the consequence of a delay here?
I mean, for us, I mean, the one delay is just not having the tool available, you know? And again, waiting on another agency if we need it. But I don't know what constrictions Public Works has.
Mr. Babica, before you respond, I want to ask the chief and deputy chief a question. If we were to delay respectfully and/or not agree to a purchase, we should not equate that to we will never use drones.
Correct.
Because we will always call other jurisdictions, whether it be King County, West Chicago, or others to multiply. Okay, got it.
We will. And quite frankly.
And we have.
And we have. And ultimately, community safety comes first. And if that's what we need to do, we will. Like anything, while we appreciate our partners, I like to be able to keep that stuff in-house so that we are accountable to our community as compared to bringing someone else in.
Sure.
So.
Mr. Babica?
Well, the easiest way to answer that question is that this is a budgeted item in the current fiscal year budget. And it's being delivered, if it's approved tonight, it'll be delivered sometime in March. If it's delayed, that leaves about 45 days in the current fiscal year to purchase that item before it has to be included in the next fiscal cycle. The drone that we're pursuing in Public Works, and again, this started as a Public Works project through the extreme efforts and great efforts of GIS Coordinator Bledsoe. He was able to actually purchase two drones or possibly potentially purchase the two drones through rather aggressive work on behalf of the city, which allowed the police department to have their own independent drone. The concept originally was that Public Works would purchase a drone and then it would be readily made available to PD and fire if needed after hours. That presented all kinds of logistical challenges because we tend not to be in the office at 2:00 in the morning. If we are, we're doing something really cool, not flying drones. But in that event, because the efforts of Mike, we were able to purchase a second drone. So what's Public Works using it for? We talked about that last year. And for us, it's probably a little bit, I don't want to say force multiplier because that has a connotation of a military context. Not that I have any problem with that, but it's not appropriate for Public Works. But it is a labor-saving device for Public Works. The driving force with this drone was to do aerial and ground survey of the transformers of our electric utility. That's really what started this whole process several years ago. That's why the need for the infrared camera. That's why the need for the military-grade capabilities of the drone because the infrared camera needs to be that detailed as we look for hotspots in both overhead wires, overhead transformers, switchgear, and other electrical accoutrements, love saying that word, because it helps us be more preventative and determining predictive failings for our utility system. But then piggybacked on top of that, now you may say, well, what's the big deal? You do that already. You're right, we do. We send two linemen out with two infrared cameras. It takes about a week for them to go through their designated route. You all just went through a compensation study. The linemen, right now, with overtime, make as much as the electrical superintendent. So that's two out there when they could be doing all that opportunity costs of doing other things in the system while we're using a certified technician and pilot. And we do have two pilots already certified by the FAA to operate that piece of equipment. So that's how we look at it in Public Works. This is an opportunity saver. This is a labor saver. This is giving us opportunity savings to put those employees out to use their benefits and their experience at a much higher grade. The other advantage, which is coming down the pike that this quickly became included with our use of our drone is the new stormwater regulations that are coming out. Currently, we are, in the current permit, we have to inspect every outfall of the city's storm and drainage system into the waterway twice a year. Once in dry conditions and once in wet conditions. That in and of itself is about a week-long project for the city engineer to go out and do with their tablet because they have to go out there and individually digitize pictures. And for safety reasons, again, they're usually teamed up with someone else while they go through there. So again, there's the opportunity costs of what could that city engineer be doing for that week of doing that. Now, a week, once, twice a year, eh, probably can be accommodated within the overall schedule. But the new permit's calling for that to be on a monthly basis. So once in wet conditions and once in dry conditions. July can be pretty dry in our area. So we're kind of trying to figure out how we're going to meet that wet conditions with the EPA. But that's an operational question that we're going to be dealing with. But again, with the drone, that can be something that can be now done with one employee with being able to go out there and digitize the images automatically. And now we have that permanent archive for all that information. But again, as technology becomes available and as staff talk to other professionals in the field, one of the other things that we are starting to see the application for this drone is let's look at the Hillwood development over there on Geneva Drive. The Hillwood development is a fairly large development. It's impressive buildings, if you haven't been out there. But during construction, that entire perimeter of that facility has to be encapsulated and controlled with erosion control fabric. Now, under the stormwater regulations, every time there's more than a half inch of rainfall, every foot of that erosion control fabric has to be inspected. Again, we send the city engineer out there, which we have one, and they walk the perimeter of that erosion control fence. And they have to document that they inspected that fence after a rainfall. Perfect application for the drone technology. So for us, the drone technology is an opportunity savings of skilled labor and skilled staff, which is allowing us going to be far more efficient with the staff we have. The community is growing leaps and bounds, and we're pretty much at the same staffing levels we've been in 2007, 8-ish? That's not an accusation. That's just a testament to the people you have working for you, how good they are at what they do. So this allows us, this is a force, I really don't want to say that, but it was so good. And I wish I would have thought about that, too, myself. But that's what the drone's going to do for us. So delaying it for another discussion, what does that mean for us? It means that we're going to have the opportunity labor costs that we're going to have to do it the old-fashioned way, the current way we're currently doing it, which works, just could be more efficient. And we'll, the deadline for the budget submissions were today. So I'd need some intervention by the Assistant City Administrator or maybe the mayor himself to cut me some slack with the finance director if I have to resubmit these capital request forms, if that's so directed by the city council. But that's why, that's what's pushing us, at least.
Thank you. I appreciate all of that. Again, I'm pretty sympathetic to all of this. I don't love being in a position where we're engaging with new technology that I think warrants some serious discussion about how we're going to use it, what the unforeseen consequences could be down the line. Or unintended consequences could be down the line. It's, I would prefer in the future with things like this, if we aren't presented with it in such a time crunch. I know that's often how things shake out, so I get it. But I guess, you know, I feel like this is a significant issue in my mind and something that I, again, it's not ultimately potentially a barrier to actually engaging with this technology. But I think it makes sense to have the conversation before we start using it, as opposed to afterward. But anyway, thank you both. Thank you, all of you, for your input. I guess I'd like to see what, go ahead.
Well, I just also wanted to point out that this was presented to the city council in January and February of this year as part of the budget process. So this wasn't a last-minute, ooh, we found some extra money in equipment and we want to do this technology. This is not, now, maybe the first blush for you as an older person, which I can understand your concerns. But this has gone in front of the city council already. So it's a little disingenuous to say that this was kind of just brought up spur of the moment. It's not. It's what the budget is for, and it's why we do this so far in advance. So just wanted to kind of say that, too.
I hear you. I guess it's more of a, and I'm sorry that that came across as what felt like a targeted attack on you, which is not how I meant it, but that if we have something in our strategic plan that calls out something like we need to look at technology at a global level and look at how we're using it and think about that at a policy level, you know, I hope we can try to make sure that those policy discussions happen so that we're not caught out where there's technology that seems like it would be useful to us and we can't have that conversation because we lose out on opportunities or, you know, statutory requirements, like with the body cams. Don't want to get off topic. You know, I don't want to be in a position where policy discussions can't happen. But yes, of course, I didn't come on until May, was not part of city council in January. You know, I'm certainly still getting up to speed on lots and lots of stuff. So there's certainly a learning curve on my end. And I, yeah, I apologize because I was not actually trying to throw you under the bus there, Rich. But I do think sometimes we need to be able to have policy discussions. And I think it's a shame if we can't have that because then we can't do something that feels important to do. I want there to be, hopefully, a way to do both. I think that's the best way to approach governing if we can. So, thank you. I guess I would like to say that if, after everyone on the dais has had a chance to speak, we could open it up. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Alder Person Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, none of the points here are an indictment of staff or anyone here. If anything, there's an indictment of myself because this was on my radar some time ago and I did not force it through. You know, it's best to have that policy discussion later than never. So, you know, I'll bear the burden of not having driven that earlier. But thanks. And that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else on the dais? Alder Person Kocarog?
I just want to say, respectfully with Dr. Nord and everybody here that's interested in the subject of AI, I really think this council is getting into the weeds here on what we're doing. It's an expanding topic. I get it. I get the interest. I'm here, I believe. Uh, I'm here, I believe, to provide the tools that, uh, make us a better city and our services better. Uh, that's where I see these technologies fitting in. Uh, I, I trust the courts and the oversight committees and all the people that are involved, especially in law enforcement, uh, to guide us as we usually are, uh, in how these things can be used. Um, I, I think, uh, I mean, I've obviously outruled on the policy discussion, but I, I'm not even sure what policies we have control over, if any. I mean, are we going to say, Rich, you can't use it when you're looking at lines in somebody's backyard? I mean, because it, there might be a corrupt part of the AI algorithm that's in the drone. I mean, I, I don't know, I just don't really get where this body is going with it. I get it from a philosophical point of view, I get it from an emerging technology point of view, but I don't really get it from a city of Geneva point of view. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. But if we call that policy discussion more of an educational, uh, you know, how are, we're bringing new technologies into the city and we want to educate the public on how they might be used and how they're going to make our city more efficient and more effective, then absolutely I'm all for that. But I, I'm just not sure where a policy discussion would go in analyzing AI algorithms for the Geneva City Council. So, thank you.
Anyone, before I recognize older person Bruno for a second time, anyone who wishes to speak a first time on this matter? Older person Patchkey.
Um, I guess I would disagree a little bit. I think our job is policy. Um, I know that there are a lot of cities that have taken this seriously and, and created policies around AI and there are, obviously, it's a growing technology. It's changing rapidly like Dr. Nord said, but I do think it's important for us to be on top of that and, and do what we can to educate ourselves and be aware of the implications of utilizing new technologies that could have unintended negative impacts on our residents. And I think that it is an important discussion. I assume that the discussion about the use of drones and potential AI technology tied to them in the future would come alongside the previous policy discussion and probably be the same discussion. Um, so I, I do hope that we will have that. I assume our city staff is going to shed some light on it as well, um, but I do think that we need to educate ourselves and we need to be aware of these things when we're voting on implementing things that could have a negative, um, impact on our residents, whether intended or not, and I don't believe it's intended, but I think that it is our job to be aware of that policy and to help set that policy.
Anyone else who has not yet spoken? Otherwise, I'll recognize older person Bruno. Older person Bruno.
Uh, thank you. To your point, valid, I would say, uh, I, I would never imagine that this body would get into super technical stuff. I imagine small blurbs that might show up in contracts that if, let's say, a, a third-party software provider was discovered to have a corrupt or misusing, you know, some black box algorithm, that we have means to either terminate the contract or extract, uh, compensation from them for violating whatever it is. I, I, it would certainly not be technical and I don't see it being too burdensome, but your, your point, I, I get your points. Thanks.
Anyone else? Open it up to the public. Dr. Nord.
Uh, the only I'll add is that there are, um, there are not just think tanks, but sort of policy development and consultation organizations, um, that are, uh, people who used to develop the algorithms that have consulted with, for example, the state of Illinois. So they called an ORCA RISC to help them think about what the ethical process is to develop policies. So, I mean, you know, I do the, I, I do this, you know, and I think about the math and I try to make things equitable in my algorithms and where I use them and I advocate for stuff, but, you know, I'm not, I, I'm not a, I'm not an expert like these other people are that I think you should actually call in and say like, you, because these people are like, they have ethicists, they have science and technology studies professionals that like think about that kind of stuff every day. So I bring those folks in and say, give us a little bit of help to figure out how we should like even think about the problem, right? Yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience? Otherwise, back to the dais, back to the dais. Any comments on item nine C, folks? We do have a motion by Marks or a second by Bruno. Deputy Clerk Fenari, please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item nine C has been approved by this council. We jump to, ladies and gentlemen, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item ten A is to consider resolution number 2023-120 granting site plan approval for a 5,000-square-foot, single-story, commercial building and associated site improvements for the property located between 602 and 626 East State Street, presented by JNK Enterprises Incorporated. A motion to put this on the floor would be appreciated. Patchkey and Swanson. Mr. McCready, is there any comments?
Commentary, uh, the following regards a vacant property which originally came to city council in 2005 for site planning and approval. Uh, the applicant is now requesting approval for a 5,000-square-foot, single-story, commercial building. The proposed commercial building would incorporate approximately 3,000 square feet for the applicant's dental practice and 2,000 square feet of additional commercial tenant space. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on November 9th, 2023, the commission unanimously recommended the city council approve the requested site plan subject to final engineering approval. I do believe we have some staff with us as well who could speak to this this evening.
We do. We have, uh, Director Timoshenko.
Director DeGroot.
Director DeGroot. We have the applicant as well. Kathleen or David, is there anything you want to add prior to this that's, hasn't already been okay to our, Dr. Connaught, is there anything you'd like to say? Very good. That only leaves us. So, from the dais, any questions, comments? Older person Bruno.
Um, probably won't change anything. I, I can't say that the curb appeal from the street side is, is great. I don't know if there's, uh, you know, any landscaping that could be considered, but, uh, I'm sure it'll go through. Thanks.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by Patchkey, uh, no, excuse me, yes, a motion by Patchkey is second by Swanson. This is item ten A. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item number ten A, resolution number 2023-120 has been approved. Thank you for your patience this evening. Item ten B is to consider ordinance number 2023-26 authorizing the issuance of electric system revenue bonds of the city of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million or in lieu thereof, general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the electric system of the city of Geneva. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Bowring. Mr. McCready.
Uh, the electric utility has identified future capacity and infrastructure needs due to the increased development of the North Geneva Business Park, the Fabian Parkway and the South Kirk Road corridors. To fund these improvements, an alternate revenue bond must be issued. City council approved the contracts related to bond issuance on November 6th, 2023. The ordinance before you this evening will, uh, approve, approve an issuance hearing date of December 4th, 2023, and set forth the intent to issue $30 million in alternate revenue bonds, and we do have Director Cruz with us here this evening as well.
From the dais, any questions for the director? If not, this is both impressive and frightening, we're going to run to the vote. Deputy clerk, at your leisure.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item ten B has been approved by this council, which is ordinance number 2023-26. We jump to item ten C. Consider resolution number 2023-121 authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, otherwise known as MABUS. Is there a motion? Ooh, Bowring and Patchkey. Mr. McCready.
The MABUS system has updated its master agreement. The agreement must be formally adopted by each participating municipality, including the city of Geneva. For Geneva to continue participating in the MABUS system, uh, the new agreement must be adopted and enforced before December 31st, 2023. Uh, just a reminder, this is the agreement that allows an organized, systematic, and prearranged system for fire and EMS emerg agencies to provide mutual aid assistance during times of need or serious incidents, and we do have Chief Antonori here with us in the audience tonight.
We are all well aware of the MABUS in action just last night, so any questions for the chief? If not, the deputy clerk will please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, resolution number 2023-121 has been approved by this council. Item ten D, consider resolution number 2023-122 authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State Street, Illinois 38 Logistics. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor, Mr. McCready.
Uh, for this next item, staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State, and again, this pertains to improvements including electric, earthwork, erosion control, paving, side, side items, stormwater system, sanitary sewer system, water main system, and landscaping.
Questions or comments from the dais? If not, on the acceptance of the certificate of completion, deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item ten B has been approved by this council, which is ordinance number 2023-26. We jump to item ten C. Consider resolution number 2023-121 authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, otherwise known as MABUS. Is there a motion? Ooh, Bowring and Patchkey. Mr. McCready.
The MABUS system has updated its master agreement. The agreement must be formally adopted by each participating municipality, including the city of Geneva. For Geneva to continue participating in the MABUS system, uh, the new agreement must be adopted and enforced before December 31st, 2023. Uh, just a reminder, this is the agreement that allows an organized, systematic, and prearranged system for fire and EMS emerg agencies to provide mutual aid assistance during times of need or serious incidents, and we do have Chief Antonori here with us in the audience tonight.
We are all well aware of the MABUS in action just last night, so any questions for the chief? If not, the deputy clerk will please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, resolution number 2023-121 has been approved by this council. Item ten D, consider resolution number 2023-122 authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State Street, Illinois 38 Logistics. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor, Mr. McCready.
Uh, for this next item, staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State, and again, this pertains to improvements including electric, earthwork, erosion control, paving, side, side items, stormwater system, sanitary sewer system, water main system, and landscaping.
Questions or comments from the dais? If not, on the acceptance of the certificate of completion, deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, resolution number 2023-123 has been approved. Thank you for your patience this evening. Item ten B is to consider ordinance number 2023-26 authorizing the issuance of electric system revenue bonds of the city of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million or in lieu thereof, general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the electric system of the city of Geneva. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Bowring. Mr. McCready.
Uh, the electric utility has identified future capacity and infrastructure needs due to the increased development of the North Geneva Business Park, the Fabian Parkway and the South Kirk Road corridors. To fund these improvements, an alternate revenue bond must be issued. City council approved the contracts related to bond issuance on November 6th, 2023. The ordinance before you this evening will, uh, approve, approve an issuance hearing date of December 4th, 2023, and set forth the intent to issue $30 million in alternate revenue bonds, and we do have Director Cruz with us here this evening as well.
From the dais, any questions for the director? If not, this is both impressive and frightening, we're going to run to the vote. Deputy clerk, at your leisure.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kosarog.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Patchkey.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, resolution number 2023-121 has been approved by this council. Item ten D, consider resolution number 2023-122 authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State Street, Illinois 38 Logistics. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor, Mr. McCready.
Uh, for this next item, staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of a certificate of completion for 1885 East State, and again, this pertains to improvements including electric, earthwork, erosion control, paving, side, side items, stormwater system, sanitary sewer system, water main system, and landscaping.
If not, on the acceptance of the certificate of completion, deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kosarak?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, resolution number 2023-123 has been adopted by this council. We move to item 10F. Consider resolution 2023-124, authorizing execution of a non-exclusive stormwater facility and management easement with our friends at the DuPage Airport Authority. Motion by Bowring?
Second.
Seconded by Patchkey. Mr. McCready.
Through the development of the city's 2025 strategic plan, the city of Geneva affirmed its commitment to ensuring Geneva is an inclusive and welcoming community to all individuals. In an effort to advance this vision and amplify the voice of diverse communities within Geneva, the City Council established a diversity, equity, inclusion task force which began meeting in June 2021. Before, before you this evening is a report, including various short, medium, and long-term recommendations for the city to implement regarding its inclusion and belonging efforts. For the City Council's consideration is the request to accept the report as presented. Once accepted, the report will serve as a roadmap for staff to begin work on implementing recommendations and bringing forward those recommendations that require City Council action.
With that said, are there any comments regarding the report as presented? The motion on the floor is to accept as presented. Older Person Patchkey?
I accept the report as presented. I will say that I was not surprised but disappointed by some of the things presented in the report, and I do hope that a lot of things will change and that we will take this seriously as an opportunity for growth as a city.
Anyone else from the dais?